Selectment meeting for Thursday, July, January, February 2019. And we'll start up some old business in minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 27th meeting as amended.
No second motion. Any discussion on them?
Very well written.
I didn't find any.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment. If you have anything to add to the meeting, please state your name. I'm gonna start with the back row. Anything for public comment, gentleman in the back row?
No, sir.
And energy committee, we have you on the agenda, so stand by. And if you're on the agenda, stand by, sir. Okay. And close public comment and bond. You're on it.
I'm on, huh?
And the things we're gonna assist from the road agent who's gonna give us, he's our subject matter expert. But the things I, I understand, the thing is, we have, we've had one bond reduction and you request a second bond reduction based upon the completion of the road. And whilst, introduce it from there and we'll let you start from there.
Well, I think it's pulling in a hundred fifty thousand right now. Being that the punch list was created so late in the weather change, we weren't able to do the items on the punch list.
Understood.
So I'd like to get the bond reduced to an agreed amount.
We have an agreed set amount, or do you have a proposal?
I'd like ten. Three down to ten thousand.
We were gonna, the, the, the figure that I was talking with my road agent earlier was about fifteen thousand. In other words, we take a ninety percent bond reduction and keep ten percent back, that would be fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And Jeff, I just wanted to make sure that's, based upon the punch list. So it's basically, I, I, from the punch list we reviewed, there's a vegetative type stuff.
Yeah, grow on grass and clean up trees.
And we'd like to, when we'd like to revisit that, when we would like to...
Well, obviously, it would have to be sometime late summer after.
Yeah, obviously, things are established. And we can finish it off completely.
What I'd like to ask for is if you could, if I could convert the hundred fifty thousand dollar bond that you have to a cash bond. In other words, bring a check in for fifteen thousand dollars.
I, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, and we'll deposit with the treasure.
It makes it simpler and it helps our bond capability also.
Okay. I, we have no issue with that.
Okay, I'll get a check in here.
You work that with the town administrator, you know him personally. Okay?
I have one other request.
Okay, we, we got a vote on that.
Okay.
And I would make a proposal that we do reduce the bond to, from a one hundred fifty thousand to fifteen thousand. And in lieu of a bond reduction, we'll actually accept cash in lieu of the bond reduction.
Yeah, I just seen the plowing board chairs here, do we wanna passify him first?
No, he's, this is out.
It's fine.
I'm gonna agree with it.
Your second motion.
Any further discussion on this?
Then you can ask for a discussion.
None at this, none. Jeff, do you have any input here? And all in favor? So the thing is, we'll accept fifteen thousand in lieu of the bond reduction.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Back in October, the last meeting we were here, Brian Pike had asked who was gonna be responsible for the acceptance of the punch list items that they were completing. And it was brought up that Jeff was the road agent, gonna be the final say so.
Correct.
I've had to go through another punch list with North Point to get this created, which I'm hoping is the last punch list that they create that Jeff can sign off on the rest of it.
I think the rest of the stuff's slightly...
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think we can come to an agreement, it's pretty, nothing technical.
I know we got the, the bounds were set, so we're good with the bounds and I think the rest of the stuff is...
Yeah, I mean, it's more of a visual thing. It's not the technical, the road's the road. You've finished, you're off, did an asphalt, turn that in.
So we'll complete these items and...
See you back in late summer?
Yeah, hopefully I get the rest of it.
I think you will, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Jeff, don't go away.
I'm not going far.
Okay.
Unless you want me to sit right here.
You're next. Okay, Jeff, you had an issue with just, talk about stipend on call.
Yes. Yeah, I, I'd like to start the, tradition, or whatever you wanna call, policy of giving the highway worker, which happens to be Peter Gomash right now, at his present time, and has been for a number of years. A stipend for basically being on call, I mean, for all, all winter, he's on call pretty much twenty-four seven, whenever we have storms, nights, weekends, holidays. And I think it would be nice to reward that individual a little bit for doing that, 'cause it pretty, pretty much put their life on hold. And as far as Pete's concerned, he's worked for the town over five years, and he's never once said he couldn't come in. You know, and when he's had other things going on in his life, personal life and stuff, but he's always stepped up a little bit and came in when we asked him to do the plow, sanding, or whatever. To some point, I found that the police department has a policy like that.
I remember discussing that last year when we found out, you know, that the police department had that stipend on call. And I thought we were kind of in agreement at that time that we thought that Pete should be on.
Yeah, we got through the year and I wanna come in and talk about it after the first of the year. I'd like to put that into motion. And like I said, the police department does it for a couple individuals, and they have a five full-time person department.
I just did some research with the town administrator, we just found out that the personnel manual we have does not address stipends. And it appears that the police department took it upon themselves to initiate stipends. And so I think we have to create a policy within our own personnel plan that will address stipends and give some guidance on how we're gonna handle them, who gets them, and pay rates, and all that kinda stuff. But the thing is, just for the benefit of my, my fellow board members, what Pete is restricted, I mean, if he's on call, that means he can't go to Connecticut to visit family, he can't go out partying, have an adult beverage or two, because that would impair, that would be the on-call type stuff.
Pete, technically, he really is all year round, but the significant part is during the winter. The summer, you know, we usually, sometimes we have a weather event, but those are our between, and, you know, it's usually not too big a deal. But this is, you know, when he leaves and works at three thirty a lot of times.
But basically, essentially, we, we found there's a, there is a shortcoming in our personnel manual, because it doesn't address that at all.
Yep.
And I think we can take it.
I think I'd like to speak here, I think anybody that's plowed knows that when that storm's coming, you're looking at it two or three days at a time. You look at the days, in the night, you gotta get up in the middle of the night, you don't sleep well. I mean, I think that stipend's a small amount of money for the amount of wear and tear it puts on somebody being on call during the winter.
I agree a hundred percent. I know other towns do it, I don't know what formula they use.
Not that much.
Really?
'Cause, 'cause that's considered overtime, it's after the forty. Most municipalities don't use a stipend. But I think if, if we were gonna do that, we need to sit down and research it and make something, if we're gonna do it, applicable to everybody instead of, 'cause you make a point, we singled out one department.
Yeah.
'Cause they, and of course, they use the excuse that, you know, it could be mandated that they have to do something, well...
I think Ploughlin Snow's pretty well mandated, last time I checked, isn't it? I mean, if we, if, if we have a snowstorm and we have to go out, we don't wait till seven o'clock, one o'clock, the time starts and we go out.
Right.
I mean...
No, I, I...
You know, and like I said, that, that individual, whoever that may be.
I concur with Bob, I think, so we have to look at the policy and create, we have to create a policy.
But I... I think we can look at that section of the policy earlier than waiting till, you know, maybe...
Maybe midsummer.
Midsummer or spring, maybe we look at that one section and come up with some ideas on it.
Okay. Most communities don't have, I'm, I'm surprised that, you know, we're creating a stipend process and that rewards people.
We'd call something different if you want.
And I'm using that even for the police, 'cause they're getting paid for their overtime.
Yep.
Plus the fact, we're paying them to be available to work the overtime and...
How do you figure that you're paying them to be available? You don't pay them until they come in.
You give them a stipend.
Yeah, that, exactly.
That's why I'm asking.
You know what I'm saying? You're paying them prior to anything even happening.
Yeah.
They're getting some kind of reimbursement.
Well, like I said, though, we could, they could go the other way and say, "Well, I'm not coming in tonight because I was going to Joe's birthday party." Or they could always say, "I'm sick." They could be sick, they might not be sick. So I just think...
And I guess that's a choice, and I'm just being the devil's advocate.
No, I know.
But that's a choice that they would make, then if they feel good conscience and that's what they have to do every time something like that comes up.
I think for an individual who pretty much puts their life on hold for six months out of the year, based on weather, New Year's Eve was a prime example. He got called in, as the rest of my plow guys did myself, and we had to go out and plow, and then the next day we had to plow. There was no New Year's celebration. Yeah, they got paid for it, yeah, he got paid overtime, and that was above his forty hours.
Jeff, we'll, we'll, we'll take it under advisement?
Yeah.
We're not gonna, probably, more than likely, I think, we're not gonna wait till the summer on that particular part of the policy, we'll discuss that.
Like I said, I found out that it's, is being done in town in other departments.
Right.
You know, I mean, I know some departments probably don't really require much of an on-call thing, but I do know this part of the department does. And I'm not asking for it for me, the road agent, 'cause when I signed up to be road agent, I, that's kinda part of the gig. You know that, you know, it's, it's not just nine to five or whatever, so I don't have any problem with it. For that position now and in the future.
We will, we will address it.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you coming in and letting us know about that.
Yep.
Okay, moving right along. Energy committee, how long on it now? How was the, how was the bid?
Thank you. Good. Very good, actually.
You like the bid, the bid was submitted?
Yes.
Share those.
Sure, so I put a little package together, I know you haven't had time to review it prior to this, just wanted to outline, first page is essentially the page that we brought the last time, gave me the overview, I just wanted to include that as background information. And then I do have a page and a half here of recommendations that have come from the energy committee. I can summarize by going over, we did receive the one bid, which we're aware of. That bid was from Granite State Solar, and it was the one bid that we were hoping to get for multiple reasons. Those are actually listed here. They do have a very desirable option to allow the town of Dunbarton to take advantage of tax credits, rebates, and accelerated depreciation, that the town wouldn't normally be able to take advantage of. Because they would actually own the physical hardware of the solar array for a six-year period of time. They then essentially are leasing the array to us over that six-year period of time and charging us a value that was listed in their bid of eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Eight hundred and fifteen dollars turns out to be intentionally done so that it washes out the credits that we would get from the ever-source bills, that we would be not having to pay for the energy on the ever-source bills. So they'd be a cash neutral or actually slightly positive for that six-year period of time. During that period of time, they would, they would be able to appreciate the array, and then at the end of that, the nuts and bolts is, they would sell the array to us for fifty thousand dollars. The array is valued at a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, that's a very competitive price in the, in the industry among other vendors also. We would get it for fifty thousand dollars at the end of year six. At that point in time, we would own the array outright, and the array has a life expectancy of approximately thirty years. Likely more. But that's, that's hard to tell out that, out that far. It is technology that has twenty-five-year parts and labor warranty, so that would all be included if anything was to go wrong with it during that time. The technology that they're using is the latest technology available at a reasonable, reasonable price. It does, they did up their proposal from what we originally were talking to them about, so it includes higher-value solar panels. They actually went from three hundred and sixty watt panels to three hundred and ninety watt panels at no extra cost. And that actually gives us more production than what was originally specified. So the final summary here is the energy committee has extensively reviewed this proposal, we've met about it, we've talked about it, we've had a lot of email exchanges between each other and the vendor. And we are unanimously in support of the Granite State solar proposal with the lease-to-own option. What I've done also here is I've given a, an actual picture of the San Borton, New Hampshire, array that is about the same size as the one that we're proposing. And that picture is included here, it's a two-row array of solar panels. We did just meet yesterday at the transfer station with Woody and, and the owners of Granite State Solar, and went through a lot of the, kinda the nuts and bolts details there. And there were no red flags that came up, that the project looks very...
Too cool with burn pit?
Uh, the burn pit actually would not have to be moved if it, if it turned out that it, it, there was something blocking that, but it would be preferable to move it, because then we would have access to the cement blocks that are around it and protect the solar array. But just the footprint, which you, you can actually see on the last page, I know it's black and white here, only encroaches a little bit on the compost pile, not on the actual burn pit.
Okay.
But the discussions with Woody are that we would, we would actually be very much in favor of burn pit being removed.
So these solar panels, this way behind the burn pit, is this little tip I'm seeing right here? So this little tip that I'm seeing here, these are right here, this is blown up larger than that picture.
This is blown up larger.
See this little tip of earth I'm talking about, is that this?
No, that is actually the...
That?
That's the little drive where the truck comes in to get the dumpsters that are right here.
Okay.
That's them coming in and driving into here. So this is the compost pile, which actually exists almost directly behind here right now. So those two rows are right in the back here in the clear, clear area. This is actually logs that are just sitting there over on this side over here.
And this comes down this way?
Yep.
And the, the burn pit would have to be removed too? No, Steve said it wouldn't have.
Doesn't, doesn't have to, although it's very desirable.
We've been noticing and watching, it fills up awfully quickly, I can't believe how much stuff gets brought there.
Really?
And then they burn it, if you watch how, how often that gets burnt, it's amazing to me, I just, until you came, I never looked at it and watched how it was burnt and, you know, we're doing calls and watching how often it's burnt, I'm amazed how quickly it fills.
Yep, yep.
I thought more people burnt the stuff at home, but, you know, those blocks that are there, those are like second blocks from Mitchie, they're not very expensive, we need to get more to block the array, it'd be easy to do.
Okay. It would be desirable, when you think about it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna mistake of, you know, a truck hitting reverse instead of drive and driving into this thing, I'd rather have them hit, have them hit a cement block than...
Yeah, those, those blocks are fairly inexpensive, 'cause they're seconds, they're not...
Okay. Woody seemed amenable to, to using a number of them as, as a physical barrier. He seemed very good with that. He actually liked the idea so that none of his guys, plowing or trucking guys, would ever mistakenly back into something back there, so...
Time, timeframe for installation, if it went accepted?
They, they could actually start in the springtime, as soon as the ground was thawed and not muddy.
Okay.
And they could have it up and running and operational by the summer.
And the bid was good for how long?
I would say this year.
Okay.
Yes. There's also another factor, the federal tax credit of thirty percent on solar installations drops at the end of this year, it's thirty percent now, it drops to twenty-six percent in two thousand twenty, and twenty-two percent in the following year, so it's continuing to be phased, phased out.
Is there anything new on the state level?
There is, the only thing new on the state level is the fact that they did meet with the renewable energy fund folks that actually have rebates available for this. And with, was, when I first came to you, it didn't look likely that that fund had available funds. Now it looks very likely that it will be replenished in July of two thousand nineteen, and with the timing of this, if this worked out, we would be, we have a very high percentage of getting that money, which is eighteen thousand...
Eighteen five oh two.
Eighteen something, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty significant amount, when you think about that, would be applied towards the fifty thousand dollar...
Cost.
Cost at the end, so it would drop our cost at the end to thirty-two thousand. Yeah, so pretty, pretty substantial rebate, which looks likely, and we would even have an opportunity, if there wasn't all the funds available now, you could potentially reapply and get it, you know, later in the year, or even next year, or anything like that. So it's not like you just have a one-shot only.
Okay.
And the eight hundred and fifteen dollars a month, that's just our usage?
Eight hundred and fifteen dollars is essentially a payment to Granite State for the, to, to pay them to, so that they could have bought all the material, 'cause they're taking a loan out, there's no upfront cost to the town to do any of this. So that is just paying them over that six-year period of time, so they can help fund the cost of putting this array up. And, and also that, it's kinda like a lease-to-own situation, that lease payment of eight fifteen ends up dropping the payment from a hundred and seventy-three thousand down to fifty thousand.
So what portion of our bill will we owe them? Ever-source still after that is...
There's still a portion of the bill, but I can tell you that the reduction of the ever-source bill is estimated at about eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So we'd be paying eight fifteen to Granite State, we'd have eight forty-five approximately less from ever-source.
Yeah.
There's still pieces of the ever-source bill that remain.
Stranded costs, right?
There's that, there's, there's the customer charge.
Taxes.
There's some demand charge, there's, there's seventy-five percent of the transmission charge, you still have to pay for the lines, the storm repairs, things like that, there's a piece that ever-source still needs to pay for the infrastructure that exists. So there are still charges on there, it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate your ever-source bills altogether.
Yeah, and the, and the event of, let's say, the spring, when we would not have, have a small draw up on electricity, what would happen with the circles of electricity to, to ever-source, would you get credit for it?
It gets, it, uh, it's a dollar-for-dollar total monetary credit on your...
So it continues to accumulate credit?
Continues to accumulate credit.
So we use it more in the wintertime again?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, there, the way that the net metering rules are even written up now, you don't even have to apply the, the reduction of, or the solar power that you're generating to electricity costs, you could use it for other town operating costs, so...
Could go to the general fund?
Could go to the general fund. That money's available as a check from ever-source, they just pay it at thirteen cents a kilowatt hour, today's, today's rates. So I think I put it in here, if the, the benefits to the town of Dunbarton, if you look at G on there, next page, now look at the last thing. The town monetary compensation from ever-source is unaffected if we either overproduce or underconsume. That money stays the same. And it's, I did include, very small print, you probably need one point seven five on your glasses there, I drew some spreadsheets here at the end, there's three of them. They include if you had annual increase in electric rates of two percent, three percent, or four percent. It shows what the cumulative surplus would be to the town, and if you look down to the lower right-hand side, it's three hundred and thirty-three thousand at two percent inflation rate on electric rates, four oh two for a three percent increase in electric rates, and if there was a four percent increase in electric rates, it's four eighty-five.
Over thirty years.
Over thirty years. And that is the surplus that is after, everything's been paid at eight fifteen a month, that is fifty thousand dollars, all of that, takes into account all of that.
What hidden costs are we missing as a town as far as the installation goes? Tree clearing, groundwork, what type of...
Yep. If there are trees to be cleared, they want the town to do that, otherwise they would subcontract that out at an additional cost. We, we're looking at the site, there isn't a lot to be cleared, we looked around, there's, you know, certainly a few trees around the boundary, anything that's within falling distance of the array out there, there's some sumacs, you know, little things that are fifteen feet high, take those down, get them out of there. So that, that is a burden for the town to take care of, is any of that tree removal. If there happened to be any ever-source upgrade to the transformer, that is also a responsibility of us in addition to this. But the transformer is rated at fifty kilowatts, and this array size is forty-six, Granite State says, I've never, never had ever-source say you need to upgrade your transformer when they come in with a system that's smaller than the transformer.
But the transformer's part of the price?
No, it's only installed onsite.
The transformer is sitting there on a pole onsite already.
It is large enough already?
It's already large enough. So it's fifty kilowatts, we're putting in a forty-six point zero three kilowatt system, AC. And it is very unlikely that that transformer would have to be upgraded, but if it did, that's a, that's a upgrade cost for us.
And how about maintenance?
No moving parts, failures are covered under the twenty-five-year warranty, parts and labor. You have to have internet there if you wanna be able to monitor it, but we already have internet for other, other reasons, so there's no extra cost there. There's really no maintenance on this stuff.
Ash from the burn pit?
It would wash off by...
Natural water?
Yep.
Okay.
The, the, the glass on the solar panels themselves is like gorilla-type glass, it's made to withstand hail, it's made to withstand everything short of meteorites and...
Where are the panels made?
Uh, South Korea.
Okay.
And so Granite State right now installs these, and then they don't have any maintenance fees for every year they come out or check them or anything like that?
No.
Is there a contract of any kind that, that something will have to be agreed?
There's no, there's no contract right now, no?
But your bid proposal...
Other than the bid proposal.
Yeah, other than that, yep. There's no separate...
I'd say, we could make a decision next week, maybe, gentlemen?
Can you bring back that original?
I can.
Okay, we need that.
I actually have it right here.
Okay. Leave it to Lee.
Are we gonna do it as a warrant?
You can absorb that, ten thousand dollars in your building maintenance budget, move it to the electric one.
Ten thousand a year, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we actually listed here, if it was fifty thousand dollars, right, you need to accumulate that over a period of six years, eighty-three hundred thirty-three a year, if you could put that away, then you'd have the fifty K if the...
There's a couple ways you can put it away, you could actually put the savings of electricity into the fine...
Oh, create a capital reserve?
Create a reserve with the check we get, that's one way we could do it.
I just thought, I just thought, you know, it's a feel-good project, it's probably a due warrant article put from the town to have it.
So the eight hundred and...
Eighty-six hundred dollars, I mean.
Right, all total.
No, eighty-six for a year. Six years.
Correct, so it's a month, well, I was looking at the monthly, monthly...
Eighty-three hundred.
Eighty-three hundred for the year. So we have to pay a bill, like an electric bill, of...
Yes, and that's no increase, we already pay an electric bill.
Right.
So the only thing I was looking at is a warrant article possibly for the fifty thousand dollars, spreading it out over five years.
Yeah. And that could be less pending on rebate.
Could.
Right.
I'd say we, let's, let's think about that and we'll put that in the agenda for next week.
Yeah, as far as, as far as the fifty grand, 'cause you could even do that the second year and start putting it away at ten grand a year. I mean, eighty-three hundred, I mean, if I was to make it ten, it's not a big amount. And you'd get an idea of what direction you wanna go in.
Yeah. Okay.
There is, there is a...
I wanna thank, I wanna thank the energy committee for doing the lit work here, this is an exciting project, it's, as Dave says, it's a good, it's a good green project and monetary value to the, to the community.
I think so. If, if you do read over the, you know, the report there, there's a lot of good little tidbits in there.
I guess I wasn't trying to just, before we make any decision.
'Cause we did kinda look at all the, all the benefits, all the risks, we, we listed a number of things in... we listed a number of things in there that, you know, help articulate the position that we took.
What's your background, may I ask?
I I own an IT company and I'm a, I'm an engineer by trade, so.
I kind of figured that. It was coming through.
Is it, okay.
Again, my father and the uh, you know, Tommy, it's a, like you said, a feel good thing, I think it's a no brainer for the town and it's very limited money, and I just thought, making the town aware of it at that town meeting structure with a warrant article makes everybody aware of something that, you know, was good, you know, good in a benefit beneficial way for the town. And I think that if it's presented that way, um more people will be aware, we could easily do it here as selectmen, but five years down, we don't even know what we did.
The only, the only risk, the only, you do any risk, once you open up to the town, if they vote against it, the thing is, we should, we should not be going behind the town in appropriate money out of our budget for it, because the towns, that's.
Right.
That's the only risk we run, and which I think is not a risk, because I think it's it's a, it's a, it goes in the category of no brainer, it's a, it's a win win, right?
Yeah, and you have two options here, could be a continued lease, which I don't think anybody wants to get into beyond that seven years. So that I think if you, when you do a proposal with a warrant, as far as putting the money aside, the fifty thousand aside, is one thing. As far as deciding what direction to go in, you know, it's a no brainer, you end up saving some money. So I think we can do that in that context, but you know, if you want to allow a warrant article to put capital reserve of ten thousand aside each year for five years, I mean.
I just think it's coming up fairly quickly and.
I think.
We do that portion.
Well, I might be, has a good point too, that after one year goes by, we can see the restrictions going in and then we can actually show substantial results after one year. Sell the project.
Yeah, it gives you a better handle of offering something to someone and showing them that it works versus.
You can install the thing and then ask them the year later to fund it, yeah, telephone it before it wakes up, they will have no choice at that point.
Well, I did ask the question to them, um what if the town chose not to purchase it in year seven, because I wanted to know that answer. And the thing is, they said, we're happy to just, you just keep paying us that eight hundred and fifteen dollars out to year twenty five. They're happy to do that, why are they happy to do that? Because they, they would be making.
They're making that residual money.
They'd be making it now out to the year twenty five instead of taking the fifty at that point, so it's worth more to them
to just keep it going out to twenty five. It would be to our disadvantage, because if you look at those spreadsheets, we actually have the whole system paid off in year nine, and that's after we started buying it in year seven.
Right.
Like, that's crazy, like, you pay it off in just a couple of years and you're done and you own it outright and all the energy that produces is all yours.
Right.
Um so it's kind of silly to to not buy it at that that period of time. But I did want to know, there had to be a clause in case there was some glitch, some issue, some something with the town coming up with money to buy it. And they don't view that as a risk, because they would just say, yeah, we'll just keep paying the eight fifteen a month, you know.
And that's my point for delaying it one year, is you have that option, but I think if you show someone success, they're gonna jump on it a lot quicker than speculative. In the first year, going in, we haven't even got it yet, and we want to have a capital reserve to pay for it when it comes along and it stirs a lot of debate versus, you know, at least you have something.
We have to a minimum of showing, hey, we're making money on this.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's hard.
Wait, this proposal costs each way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly, um, you know, I'm happy to come before, you know, any public forum you would want, you know, if it did happen to be the town, we could bring Granite State in here, I mean, these things are not speculative, they're really not, they produce power.
But you know what, your first instant, your first public, you know.
Oh, I know.
The first town meeting.
I've, I've seen it, I know.
You haven't got anything there to make an assessment with, you're gonna have the naysayers.
You're gonna have the naysayers, even if it's showing.
But you do have something, you show, you show a balanced payment schedule over those years until we do the buyout, so you do have something to show them actually after town meeting.
But remember too, that the first proposal for any solar project was flatly denied by the town a short while ago. And so that.
Well, I don't think you have enough research either.
Correct, that, I agree with that.
That was the biggest reason, there was no backup for it.
Very, is this something we can put on the website? This, this back, this report of yours, is that something you'd be interested in?
Why don't we wait till we, why don't we wait till we make a decision on the contract?
John had something to add, I think, too.
John, any, any value added?
Oh, just, just the uh last, last time around, the uh the uh largest argument was, well, mounting it on the, on the roof here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That someday the roof is gonna need to be replaced, you know, shingled or whatever, and it's gonna cost us money to do that and people can all.
All right, um, go ahead, sir.
What if, what if you had a uh a plan B that said you bought the, you bought the um array at year nine for like five thousand dollars instead of fifty?
To me, I wouldn't even take it as a warrant, I'd probably leave it at our table. So that would be a plan B.
We don't want to give them too many plans.
Right, right.
Something to.
State, state your name for the record. Sir, your name for the record?
John Stevens.
No, not John.
Bob Ray.
I didn't know who you were calling out.
Okay, uh we'll probably make a decision next week, uh I wanted to just report, again, I say thank you again to your diligence and your view on the contract, and uh I'm excited.
Yeah, I am too, um just as a a follow on, I guess, um I I, I'm not speaking totally for the energy committee, but I'm willing to help manage the project if given the go ahead, working with these guys to offload the town of some sort to get this thing going, because I.
That'd be great as well.
I mean, I have, I have a, I have a relationship with solar vendors, I've talked to enough of them, I know these guys now pretty well.
Okay.
I also, you know, I understand the industry, um so I'm happy to help there.
Do you install panels at your home yet?
I do.
Okay.
And I can show you the payback there.
Thank you again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That was a win win, okay. Next week's agenda. And here's, make sure you leave the uh contract with uh.
I have it, we'll put it in the basket, you guys can read it.
Okay, excellent.
I didn't have the original envelope, do you care about that?
No.
I'll just make sure I scan it so you can have it electronically.
I do have, I already scanned.
Oh, you already did, okay.
It actually gives us a chance to look at this a lot closer.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the problem, the problem budget, next one.
Problem budget, never.
We're gonna talk about the, your town administrator's budget, so Lean, you're on the hot seat.
All right, so before you, you have a three page budget worksheet, and what it consists of is all the other accounts within the operating budget that doesn't fall under the department budgets that were presented to you earlier in the year.
Okay.
Um so I'll just basically go through the line by line like everyone else has in the past.
No.
Um first section is executive, it's pretty much all um salary payroll related. So the board of selectmen line is a two percent increase, and it may look, if you take the two thousand eighteen budget to two thousand nineteen budget, look like a four percent increase, because within the accounts here is one two thousand six hundred and thirty three dollars on page two, that's the sum of the warrant article that passed last year for the two percent raise elected officials, I just not, haven't moved it to these other budget lines, because it's, it gets detailed, so that is an accurate two percent increase for the board of selectmen.
I didn't call them eleven.
Correct, um and you'll find that with any of the elected positions, they have not been adjusted. It's the sum that you'll find on page two under the two percent elected officials. Um town administrator, um fifty nine oh twenty five reflects a two percent increase. Secretary town office, that's a combination of uh three positions I have in the office, that is a two percent increase. Recording secretary is the minute taker, and that is a, for your meetings, a two percent increase.
She said she was gonna give some back, but she has much funnier.
That includes uh fifty two weeks, and I did uh adjust it for three additional meetings in case something should come up where she has to participate in a workshop of some kind.
Okay.
Financial administration, audit services, again, we're under a multi-year contract, uh there are no increases in that. It's a flat budget for thirteen five, tax collector is an elected position, the seventeen six oh five reflects a two percent increase. Deputy tax collector is a flat, um that's my position filling in for the tax collector when she's not available. The treasurer is elected position, that not, sixty nine twenty is a two percent increase. Dues, um that is for a number of different organizations within the group, and if, when you look at the eight page detail, I apologize, because this was our last minute things. There's a lot more information that's typed in underneath the accounts, for example, I just mentioned dues at the twenty seven sixty. It's at the very bottom of this one, it's at N N R A Association dues is twenty six fifty. And then it also covers NHMA assessing, welfare, tax collector and town clerk dues, a hundred and ten. So that's where I came up with that twenty seven sixty, so you'll find a little bit more detail in the uh small print, but just to help you identify where I got these numbers. Uh advertising town office, I left the same at fifteen hundred, reference books, town offices, I left the same. Uh postage town office, the stamps are going up five cents on the uh every um on every stamp on a roll, um the meter will be going up three cents on a stamp. Uh so I've added, and I think it was a two point one percent increase, so I've added two, two percent to this uh original two thousand eighteen budget. Office equipment repair, I left the same, um just for board's information, we've been shredding and a lot of old records that we don't have room for, and we've burnt out our shredder, so um those small items that might be like a refrigerator or a shredder or um a staple comes out of this line, so I love that.
What kind of records are we shutting, shredding?
Just old um AP payroll records that we can't throw away that might have confidential information on it. Copier maintenance agreement, that is uh, covers the meeting copier in my office. And um last year we had it budgeted at nineteen thirty six, we went over on the, the uh line, that also includes Linda's copier, so there's somewhere between the two machines we went over on account, so that's um I left it at the twenty two fifty five, which is, covers the overage and the maintenance contracts. Computer support services, I increased it to twenty nine. And that is based on, if you look at the detailed report, True North is thirteen four forty, I'd like to add two users at twenty three seventy six. That also will require licenses of twenty four hundred for those two, um excuse me, Microsoft licensing is twenty four hundred for the existing users, adding two licenses at twenty dollars a piece would be four hundred and eighty dollars more.
Who are the new users?
Fire department, and they never increased our, True North never increased our um user for the transfer station, they've been monitoring it for a year, it just wasn't included in my total count. So that includes the fire department and the transfer station. And that should say BMSI licensing tax, fund accounting payroll comes to sixty five eighty nine. Clerk work is nineteen twenty six, and then the server, uh server virus protection at eight seventy four. So that's where I came up with my twenty nine thousand dollars.
And there are, those don't come out, they're only divvy the files?
No, that comes out of the um financial administration. Uh medical services, that's for our, our, our physicals that we send our employees to, I get that flat. Fees and services for the town offices, um that is the website support and research, other services. But I kept that flat. Printing town offices, that's where my town report comes from, uh the mailing of the post office, um the ballots for the town clerk for elections. I've gotten two quotes that ranged at fifty two and change up to fifty nine, so I feel comfortable that I can sign on one of those two companies to print our town reports. Record preservation, that was requested, it's part of this group, so I put, I left it there, the town clerks requested four hundred. Telephone town office, um the rates have gone up a little bit, seems that's a twelve month. I just covered the actual expenditure. Supplies town office, last year when we were trying to do level services budget, the girls and I looked at our supplies and we felt comfortable that we could cut it and be careful with our shopping. Um the actual expenditures, you um included an additional three hundred dollar cartridge for the town clerk's um laser jet, um which he has two of in her office, which is no longer supported by the state, so we did see an increase in our, a lot of uh the more expensive items, so I bumped that back up to where it was two years ago at fifty five hundred. Training town offices, we had a request from the police department that, if you look at the detail here, Brian Tyler has uh requested one of three year education of six courses in the first calendar year of two thousand nineteen with, which is fifty eight, fifty five, excuse me, twenty five eighty of the town's portion. That's what I've inputted there. Social security, thirty nine, six eighty one. Let me go to that page here. That is under personnel. That was based on payrolls requests from departments with two percent increase, um that comes to the thirty seven seven eighty one. This does not include full-time police, full-time overtime and full-time holiday. Two thousand eighteen's SS um social security uh also included special duty of thirty seven thirty four, which is offset by revenues. So I've increased, I feel comfortable increasing it fifty percent to cover additional special duty pay of nineteen hundred dollars, so there's a little bit more the.
Nothing is free.
Basically, the payroll request, it would be thirty seven seven eighty one, I've increased it to thirty nine, six eighty one to add nineteen hundred to cover social security that I'd have to pay for special duty services, which again is offset by uh revenues on the other side.
Do you know the total revenue for uh, uh we get for um town goes of general revenue from special duty?
I'll have that discussed with you next week, because it is not my revenue.
Okay. It's substantial?
It's around fourteen thousand, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Medicare.
Have to pay for the coverage for two years here.
Uh this part of the uh taxes are covered by all employees and full-time officers. So that combined total is fourteen two, and it also covers any Medicare that needs to be covered uh paid out for special duty officers, which was paid eight hundred and seventy three dollars in two thousand eighteen. So that's where I came up with my fourteen two. Retirement, uh retirement does not include overtime request, holiday pay. Um is not considered um New Hampshire retirement reporting, it's considered overbase from allowed salary, so this is strictly based on everyone that's full-time, ten people, um for their salaries only. And that's, and because we have that new, uh we've brought from nine employees to ten, that's the increase that you see there. Unemployment, Primex, that's a contract, they billed us a little bit less, so there's a decrease there. Workers' compensation, that's a Primex uh bill, and that's gone up um for their contract. Vacation longevity, on the detail, that covers four employees that qualify. In the past, we had three, we've had, now have one that's meet the eight year minimum, so qualifies for the first year of um vacation longevity.
Now, that's, I'm, I'm coming for twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Okay.
All those, there's four individuals qualify for that.
Gotcha.
Health insurance, and this is based on the.
Drink some water, drink some water.
Pardon?
Drink some water.
It's, it's all right, no. Health insurance, it seems a decrease, um that's not as grand as the board I'm sure would like to see it reduced, but that's because we have one additional person on stipend. And then we also, the big change from two thousand eighteen is that we had a single person with the new employee working starting in this past September, uh April, uh that's a two-person plan, so that's a small reduction of about eight grand, seven, eight grand. Dental insurance is based on the uh slight increase, uh so there's a small increase from two-person plan and the increase of the plan itself. Disability insurance, that's again Primex, that's billed through them, that's a contract price, so that's slightly up. Town building maintenance, we didn't have a lot of um discussion with the other departments as far as their needs and having a detailed. as far as their needs and having a detailed list of projects that we were looking for. I know the Board has a few items in place. I put a placeholder in there for the same amount as we did last year. So that may be something that the Board wants to discuss. I know that the, a couple of items that we're contemplating are going to be fairly costly. Admin, General Government, we have currently a mowing bid that we pay out 3,900. We typically leave $1,000 in there for other incidentals, whether it be grass seed, fertilizer, anything that we've been neglecting to use, there's a little extra in that line for that. Gasoline Town, Diesel Town, those are just a placeholder that we use because we pay our bill through the Town's Accounts, and then we deduct the expense of the key that's using up the gas from the Departments. And the reason for that is so that they are accountable for their gas usage and they don't pass the total expense onto the Town, keeps them accountable. Electric Town Office, I kept it flat at 3,000. Electric Town Hall, I kept it flat at 2,000. Electric Fire and Police, I kept it flat again. Transfer Station, I brought it up a little bit because I think it's all this equipment that he has there, the heaters, they seem to use up a little more energy, so this is just to cover the actual cost. Electric Highway Garage, I kept it flat. Heating Oil Town Office, I kept it flat. I just want to remind the Board that this calendar year, this past fall, we, every building in the Town Office had a full fill-up of oil that was given to the Town by the school. So we actually would probably see these expended lines with at least $400 to $500 increase, but we didn't have to do that. So gum martinfield delivered those at no cost to us. Heating Oil Highway Garage, I increased it slightly based on the usage or expenditure. Again, they had a free fill-up. Heating Oil Town Hall, I kept that flat. Heating Oil Police and Fire, I kept that flat. Heating LP for the Transfer Station, I kept that flat. Janitor is a payroll item for the clean, cleaning the Town Offices. And Heating Maintenance Repairs, I kept that flat.
Not 2%? Not 2% for that?
Yes, that does cover 2%, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Heating Maintenance and Repairs, I tried to schedule furnaces to be cleaned numerous times, but just, it was just an oversight with the local company, just couldn't get in to do that. So that's why it's so low. But I did keep that flat, I'd like to try to schedule our furnaces to be cleaned probably at this point at the end of the season. Property Liability Insurance, that is a contracted item. It came down slightly, and that's the amount there. And Insurance Others, always left at $1,000, that's our deductible. If we have a property liability claim, we have the funds to at least, where we'll get some reimbursement from the damage, we'll have money to cover that deductible. And that's what I have to you.
Thank you.
So, again, the detail, which is on the smaller print, does give you additional notes that I had. And I kind of mentioned slightly with the different areas and how I came up with the numbers. This includes every Department, every account. So if you go to the last page, nine, at the bottom of the sheet, each line three, four and five includes the Warren Article Revow. But when the Board is presenting the budget to the voters, it's actually not part of the operating budget. But the account that it's inputted, because the Department of Revenue sets it up that way, it gets added into it. So I've deducted it, so you can see that the budget for 2018, which includes the 2% Warren Article, which is approved, gets added to the operating budget. The set line is the actual to date, I still have some credit card entries that we have to make, and there may be a few additional expenses out there that I'm not aware of that will start to show up. And then you can see that the line five, Department Heads Presentation, that is what your current budget is for 2000, the proposed budget is for 2019.
So overall, it's about $100,000.
Four, five, that's correct, Dave. Two, three, four, zero, nine, three, zero, minus...
Actually, it's right there, nine, two, two, three.
Yeah. As, before we, before we adjust anything.
Right.
Correct. And then the actual, which is, has not been fully spent, I just did a quick calculation, we're looking at $57,383. That will be lapsing into the general fund surplus.
That's it for my revenues?
That's, that's just from the expenses.
That's from the budget, last year's.
From last year's budget.
Quick numbers is 57,000?
Yeah, I'm going to double-check it right here, two, three, nine, eight, three, one, three. Yeah, 57,383, as of today.
I think we budgeted pretty good last year then. We didn't go over, but...
We do have some items in the, within that, those expenditures that were encumbered. For those that didn't understand their budget, that procrastinated, that were able to come up with contracts, that type of thing, so.
Yeah.
And then next week, we'll have the projected revenues, what we've, what we've collected to date, which is over. I will do that. And then I'll also have pulled together a draft Warren Article for the Board to look at and consider. And then the last thing that we need to do is look at the budget as a whole and then come up with some recommendations as to whether areas you feel are inflated or need to be reduced for any reasons.
You have any idea of our revenues at this point, no?
I know we're, we're, did I put this before? I just had the girls export, they just sent it to me today. Because I was hoping to have it earlier, but Judy just did it tonight.
That's okay, you can just do it next week.
Yeah, I know we're over, definitely over. So that means that we'll have additional surplus from that budget line as well.
And we never got that rent bridge funding that we got last year when we applied that 85,000?
When I inquired with D L T, they said that was not coming through.
It's only where we're on TV and everything.
Well, because we need the, probably to out-prepare our budget, we definitely need the revenues. So it'll probably be next week, after next week's meeting, we should probably standardly start kind of our work session.
Yep, so can I just...
Make that decision next week?
Yeah.
So can I also just remind you that...
Still bring your calendars next week so we can look at that, and we can have that, make a decision.
Bring your calendar.
Yes.
Because I have deadlines to meet, I will be sending out notices to all the Departments that the, their annual reports will be due by a certain deadline, which is not going to be very far away, because I'm a little bit behind with that memo. But I think we've really streamlined it and they, they don't usually have any issues getting me their reports in three weeks' time. Also, I'm shooting to have a budget public hearing, if I can find my sheet, for February 7th, I believe it is, yeah.
To the back, is that where you have a backup?
It's a Thursday. And the reason I choose that day is because the Petition Warren Articles deadline is the Tuesday before, which is on February 5th. And if anyone should present a Petition Warren Article with money, it has to be part of the public hearing. So I'll be posting a notice in the paper, probably within the next two weeks, probably a Sunday, posting it on the website. That will have our public hearing scheduled for February 7th. With, and includes a snow date on the same notice. That way, we're covering both and we don't bind ourselves to miss the seven-day requirement. So during that time period, everything's really going to be very tight. And, you know, including getting the Town Report complete with the actual...
Has it been, have you heard of anything in the works with potential Warren Articles?
I haven't, just the ones that the, a few of the Departments have presented.
Looks like mostly kept in reserve.
Kept in reserve, yeah.
And the solar?
Potentially.
So it looks like a fairly normal...
Okay. Thank you, Lean, that's good. So next week, we'll look at revenues next week, and then we'll set a date for the work session. Surely, I anticipate probably the week of the 20th, or the 13th, I'm saying it correctly, the 13th.
What was the date, Bob? It looks like you're writing the 23rd Selectman Regular. Are we moving the meeting a day or something?
No, no. Oh, that came out of your box?
Yeah, was that in yours?
That was in my box.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I put it in your box.
Well, you had something you had to schedule, it was a meeting with another committee or something, right?
No.
Didn't you just say you had to mark your calendar for something?
Yeah, I marked that for filing, that's the filing period.
That's what it is, he did.
Box, because it had fallen in my box.
It's the filing.
It's the filing period, for elected officials.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to keep going on in the general, with that. Any questions on Lean before we move on?
Nope.
Thank you much, okay?
You're welcome.
Mailbox, I want to go through a few items in the mailbox. First of all, Lean found out, we have a contract, a safe contract for tire purchases, so we can get discounted tire purchases. She sent, she sent that out to the Departments. Dave, last week, you asked about language about one of the interpretations of milfoils, since we, you had a question, raised appropriate versus just appropriate? And we had a response to that, so you read the response, they recommended we leave the language as, as boilerplate language and not mess with it.
Yeah. So, thank you for asking that, Lean.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to me, but I'll leave it.
And I got a thank-you note from one of our employees, just to let you know, about the, the card we, the gift card we included with their page, just at Christmas. So I thought it was kind of nice, get someone to acknowledge it. And that's my mailbox, small. I'm going to open up for Public Committee at this point.
Very nice card.
Leo?
No, rather than the solar system seems like the way to go. It really does make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And my thoughts on what you guys were talking about, whether to put it on a Warren Article or not, if you can do it out of the budget, why wouldn't you just do it that way? And rather than wait the nine years and lose that money, you know, pay it off before that.
Yeah. I thought the committee did a great job of, of all the options out there. And as, as I said to the John, it does go into the category of no-brainer.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, how can we, is it, it's a no, it's a win-win proposition, you know? I was very skeptical of it as well.
Not having the paperwork in front of you to see, but he explained it very well.
He did, he did a nice job.
Yeah, so.
He did a good job, he was on the Energy Committee, and they, they were looking at that direction, and he had a lot more expertise and experience with all of this. So they let him do the driving of the bus to get to a point. And I have to say, he took a lot of time. I missed going to that meeting yesterday, I planned on going at noon time. And I go to the Transfer Station, and I notice they're coming back from looking at that site. And I'm thinking, that's what I forgot to do today.
It's okay, Bob.
No, I just wanted to listen to what the solar, granite, solar had to say, you know? And I didn't know if I would have any questions, but I have to admit that the, the email I got from the Energy Committee that went around to all of us on the committee was very detailed, Lean did a real good job, did a lot, you know, explained a lot of the things. I knew coming in today that we were going to get a good feeling from it, because I knew he was going to make a fairly good presentation.
And the fact that the Energy Committee, with his oversight, will oversee the installation, that's a, that's a win-win.
Yeah, the original plan was to put it on the roof here. And it was shot down, and I remember, because you'd have to put a roof on first, it wouldn't make sense not to. So that was a cost. And then eventually, if you need to change the roof, you still have to take the panels off, you know?
I thought when they asked about the roof, and no one even considered the roof, and everyone was looking at them, looking at each other dumbfounded in the middle of a town meeting.
Yeah, right.
And...
Overlooked, you know?
Yeah.
It was overlooked.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think at that, that particular junction, there wasn't a lot of legwork done at this one. This one, we made 100% off. Field is better off, you know, to have the, a solar field is way better off than having your own building. I, we got the room, so.
Could you, could even leave it there when it's obsolete if you had to.
But it's, but I mean, we have the room, so it doesn't make sense not to use it, you know?
Yeah.
You have to give the Energy Committee a lot of credit, because they've looked into lighting, which has saved us money, you know, both at the, in the garage and the...
All the buildings.
The library was chewing up a lot of lighting, I like to say, and so is the...
And I give John a lot of credit for that, because he put a lot of legwork into it, you know?
Yeah.
The alarm systems, you know, they've done quite a bit, and, and they've always come out with a pretty good example of what direction we should go in. And this is stellar for what they've done with the solar, I think.
I concur. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board, I'll bring it to you, Leo.
I don't think I've been this week.
Bob, to you.
Yeah, I don't think I've been this week.
I had one concern.
It was a clean sweep.
You guys got one concern?
We're going into the, the heating season, it's going to get cold. And the things I'm concerned about, I know. Space heaters, plug-in space heaters. And we talked about saving heat, I mean, we heat with oil, propane, the transfer station example.
Am I too late for the solar presentation?
Are we anywhere in the buildings, are we allowing employees to bring in home space heaters and plug them in? Because that would be a complete waste of energy and save the...
Yeah, you see, yeah, I don't, no, I'm not aware of it. At one point, before we installed this, there was an heater in that office down by the feet.
I would just, could we send out a message to remind supervisors to maybe, what, most space heaters should not be being used in our buildings?
Do you feel like there might be some?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I was not aware of that. So that's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue. Amen, amen, and I'll say amen again. And I'm concerned, I don't want to, I don't want to be like another town and have our buildings burned down.
No, those things, I don't really trust them either, neither do I.
Okay.
And, no, another question too, is I noticed what he talked about.
Eight o'clock, I'm thinking.
I guess the space heater, the transfer station?
Eight o'clock, tonight's.
You know, which is a propane?
Yeah.
Is that one of the small salamanders?
Yeah, I think so.
Because I got a new one, I can give them one to use there. I see them there one day when it was really cold with the wind blowing through, and I brought the things down, I got one that they can have and put over their...
What do you mean, we're not buying a salamander heater by our...
Yeah, well, you know what I mean.
The cyclic building is pretty cold.
Yeah, but we must have a modine that blows down.
We do, and it's still not adequate.
It's not adequate, though, because it sends heat down, but the wind coming in just pushes it to the back. So they've got one on the floor, so they've got one on the floor there that keeps it warm around their feet.
That blows the flame, that one, that side?
It's, it's run with a propane, $20 tank.
With all that cardboard? We have to come up with a better solution.
Well, they're, they're off to that one side, because it...
It's just somewhere that they can step out to the side, warm the hands and feet, and go back when they...
I would think that we provide a smaller modine there or something for them to do that at.
I guess...
Well, maybe that's something we can look at.
That's what I'm talking about, because an open flame, that, that's...
I'm not exactly sure what that system is, but...
Those are open flames that they blow out.
Yeah, well...
There's cardboard in front, you're going to catch it.
Yeah, well, you know...
We should look into that next year, I guess, I didn't realize that was happening either.
Well, he's looking to buy one on, in his budget, he mentioned that, a new heater.
I do, it's a salamander heater that...
I'm, I'm not sure what brand or style it is, but it is...
Yeah, they all blow flames out there.
Yeah, and it's a propane run.
We should look at adding an additional modine if they need it to blow the actual heat right on them, if we need to.
Well, I guess everybody thought in the past that it was warm enough if they kept moving. But I mean, it doesn't get that way.
Okay.
I want us to look into that, I guess.
Yep. Lean, I'll bring it to you, Town, ask Town Minister.
Did you want to touch on the annual?
Report?
No, the annual, that will have to do another...
Back to...
Our security system.
Yes, I will, thank you. All right. Bob told me I can't talk too much about this, so, no, I think it's...
No, I didn't say much of it, I haven't.
No, I think it's, we've had some issues with the current monitoring company, and All-Star Security Systems, I'm going to say it. And so we're looking at, Lean's looking at two, she's identified two additional vendors who are familiar with the equipment, and they're familiar with the problems. And she's entertaining right now to bring those companies in, to do interviews with them, let them assess our system, and come up with a new contract with two different companies.
My, my, my biggest thing was Lean had asked if we could send a notice out telling we want to discontinue a service, but I don't want to do that until we get to new bids, in case they're not financially...
Feasible, feasible.
So I don't want to notify them of any, I'd like to do this as quick as possible. So I don't wanna notify them of any, I, I'd like to do this as quick as possible so that we could.
I have something scheduled, but maybe I can ask him to revise his quote to give us monthly.
Maybe, maybe it just covers January.
To cover January?
Right.
Um one other thing I, I picked up on when I reviewed the bills is.
There's a mistake on one or two of them?
There's a ninety-six-dollar credit when we do the annual monitoring of security and fire alarms. And then if you look, this one's the same for this building. And then on this third building, it's the same monitoring, we're only getting a sixty-dollar credit. So this is either only monitoring fire and this one's security, but the credit is different. So that bill's either incorrect on the top or the credit amount is wrong.
I, I would say that would be uh overcome by events because if we go for a monthly bill.
Cause if you look over here.
Right, but.
You're at two twenty-eight, Mike, and that's sixty.
Right.
Okay, so follow me, so.
Sixty.
Either that bill is wrong or that credit's wrong. And then if you go to the last page here, see that one's another one that says it's sixty. And then if you go to this one, they're giving you a hundred and twenty, which is sixty and sixty.
Right.
But they're charging you here for fire, two eighty-eight, and then monitoring security, two twenty-eight.
Could we have them clarify those bills?
Yeah.
These ones combined are two eighty-eight, so there's a.
Discrepancy in the bills.
Discrepancies in those bills.
So ask them two, two questions. It would be, the questions would be from All-Star is clarify his bills and what would be the month, the month cost to monitor? In fact, we, we wanna monitor just for January, correct?
Well, what I'd like to do is get them to clarify the bill and then hopefully in a week or so, we'll have the answer from the other companies.
Okay.
So we can either pay them at the end of the month or move to another company, tell them we've decided.
So Lean, the pressure's on to probably get some, some action within a week? I know one, when's the earliest for one of them?
On the fourteenth, which is on Monday. I'll have an answer by the seventeenth.
Okay, and the second one was?
I'm still waiting to hear back from them.
We could get one next week and that could be a potential.
Yeah.
Just so we know what to do with those, but I think that there's, there's some corrections on that bill one way or another. Or he's gonna give us a better explanation.
Of, of the, in other words, the annual monitoring, some of it's got to ninety, some of it's up to sixty. There's a definite difference in some of the billions. And the thing is, if you notice in the checks we signed, we're gonna pay off the two bills he claims we owe it. And we're gonna just be done with those. Saludos, Bob. Okay. Lean, anything else? I need, okay. Then uh I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirteen.
I'll second it.
Why, eight fourteen?
Second. So be it.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned.